Founder Abraham Penn taught a valuable lesson that has been part of a tradition since 1919, when he said, "I'd rather make a friend than make a sale." For more than ninety years, Puritan has been making friends as a unique, family-owned company right here in Cape Cod. At Puritan Cape Cod on 199 Main Street, as well as Chatham, Mashpee, and Hyannis, you'll find the latest in men's and women's clothing, as well as ski and tennis equipment, and much more. Puritan Cape Cod, (5480116), or puritancapecod.com.
Internet services provided by Cape.com Incorporated. Established in 1994, Cape.com is the only locally owned and operated internet service provider on Cape Cod. Our specialties include e-commerce applications and design, wide-area networking services, and high-speed DSL internet access throughout eastern Massachusetts. Cape.com continues to lead the way with cutting-edge applications, superior networking services, and quality customer support.
Welcome to the Monday, April 28, 2014, meeting of the Falmouth Board of Selectmen. The Board is returning from an executive session to our open session. I invite you all to rise and join the Board as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
A few procedural announcements before we begin. My name is Brent Putnam. I'm the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen. To my left is Selectman Mary Pat Flynn, Town Manager Julian Susso, and Assistant Town Manager Heather Harper. To my right is Vice Chair Doug Jones, Selectman Kevin Murphy, and Selectman Rebecca Moffett. If you have a cellphone or some other device that makes noise, or might spontaneously create music while you're here with us this evening, we ask that you turn it off or silence it during your duration. And if you'd like to speak this evening, there will be opportunities for public comment. We ask that you adhere to our speakers' policy, a copy of which is on the door outside and on the lectern here. Please wait to be recognized by the Chair, and when you are recognized, come to the lectern, identify yourself for the record. We may know who you are, but that doesn't mean our recording secretary or the folks at home do. And please direct all your questions and comments through the Chair. If you leave before we are adjourned, please remember, we still have business to conduct, and so please leave quietly, so it doesn't disrupt the proceedings. Please also remember to refrain from any conversations or discussions here in the room, or immediately outside in the hallway, because it can interrupt the proceedings. If you'd like to record this evening's meeting, you may do so via audio or video. Video does require permission of the Board. Audio simply requires an announcement to the Board. So at this time, is there anyone who wishes to record this meeting via audio or video?
I'd like to take a picture of the video.
No? I'll leave it to the Board. I don't know if still pictures considered video, but are there any objections from the Board?
No.
There are no objections. Anyone else? All right. And so with that, we come to the announcements and proclamations. First, in our announcements, the public should know that we did in executive session discuss and vote the town manager's contract. The Board has voted to renew the town manager's contract, so if there are any questions or comments about that, the executive session minutes will be released in the coming weeks, and of course, you can always reach out to members of the Board after the meeting. We have some vacancies on various town committees. The Affirmative Action Committee has two positions available. The Board of Assessors has one position. The Building Code Board of Appeals has two positions available. The Cable Advisory Committee has two positions. The Cape Light Compact has one alternate position available. The Conservation Commission has one full and two alternate positions available. The Cultural Council has six vacancies. The Design Review Committee has two alternate positions. The Finance Committee has one vacancy. Historic Districts Commission has one full-time and one alternate. Human Services Committee has three vacancies. Solid Waste Advisory Committee has one vacancy. The Steamship Authority Port Council, well, that vote will be taken this evening. Substance Abuse Commission has four vacancies. The Town Building Committee has three vacancies. The Transportation Management Commission has three vacancies, and the Water Waste Committee has one vacancy. If anyone is interested in these positions, please come into Town Hall, the Town Manager and Selectmen's office, apply, fill out an application, and then come in. We'll schedule an interview for you. I'd like to note also that all committees and commissions, the terms expire at the end of June, on June 30. And we will be taking, and we will be entertaining, applications for all of those positions. So anyone who is interested, please do come in. Please put in your application. Just because a seat is currently occupied, and it is not vacant, does not mean that you may have an opportunity to be appointed by the Board to that position. Are there any other announcements from the Board, or the Town Manager's office?
No, sir.
All right. With that, we come to our public comments section of tonight's meeting. Beginning of every meeting, we reserve ten minutes for general public comment on items that are not on our agenda. Each individual is limited to two minutes, and there's a maximum of ten minutes, so once we reach that ten-minute timeframe, we do have to move on to other topics. Is there anyone who wishes to speak this evening? Over here on the left.
Good evening. Edward Jallowich, 54 Alma Road, Falmouth. I'm a homeowner in the proposed Little Pond Sewer area, and I'm concerned about the total lack of any direct outreach to the affected residents of the area. Almost all the people I have spoken to in the past few weeks have little understanding of the project. The details of the timing and cost, the betterment and hookup, have not been communicated directly to those who will pay for this project, and endure the disruption to their yards and streets. The issues of grinder pumps, who will need them, and the cost of installing and maintaining them, has also not been communicated. What happens during power outages, and how will these pumps function in a seasonal-use home, where there'll be many months of no operation at all? Where will the sewer lines be located? Under existing pavement, or along the edges, where there are many old trees? And how deep? Very important questions, no answers. One example for your consideration is an elderly neighbor who has lived in Falmouth all her life, called and asked my wife, "What's going on? There's surveyors in the street in front of my house. What are they doing?" When she was told about the impending sewer project, she said, "Are they going to dig up my yard? I have no way to pay for this. I'm too old to deal with this." She's eighty-eight. Many other neighbors I've spoken to have had similar reactions, and almost all of them will vote no, because they don't know what's going on. People deserve to receive information, and enough information, to make an informed choice on this very important issue. I ask the Board to do all in your power to have direct information given to the property owners in the area, including meetings, where the residents can ask questions in detail of the engineers planning the project, and any town staff that may have knowledge of this project. This needs to be done before the election. You can't ask people to vote on something they don't know about, and do not understand. You need to reach out to those who are directly impacted. It needs to occur before the election, and it's only about three more weeks, and it is seriously overdue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Rebecca Putnam, Precinct Nine. I was contacted by a young mother last night, who, for six years, lives on the corner of Route 28 and Judy Ann Lane in East Falmouth. She has been to the DPW multiple times. She asked me to come over, because she has the three young children at home, cannot come here herself. This is her water on a daily basis. Cannot wash her clothes, cannot bathe her children, cannot feed her children from the tap water. She spends exorbitant amounts of money on her actual water bill to run and run and run the water, to try to clear it out. Four neighbors on her street were told that there were pinholes in the actual water main, sucking possible debris from the ground into the water main, and into their taps. They have been out multiple times and bled the end of the line for her. It's not working. She's replaced her hot water tank. She now has to replace it again, because whatever this is, is actually eating her water tank. Her children are now starting to get skin rashes. Clearly, the water has an issue on that line. Many people know me as Bob Rodrick's granddaughter. My grandfather, forty years ago, installed many of these water mains as a private contractor throughout town. Forty years ago. If a water main has four pinholes on one street, why are we not replacing it? We're going to do a possible water treatment plan. It's not going to fix this, and I'm sure there are other neighbors in town that have the same issue, and maybe don't know where to turn, and where to speak up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Calling once? Calling twice? All right. Thank you all. On to our next agenda item. And so everyone understands, we cannot comment per our policy regarding public comment. We cannot comment on these items, but someone will probably be in touch with you regarding them in the future. Next item on our agenda, we have minutes of meetings, April 14, 2014, public session.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes from April 14, the open session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. And then we have the, I think this is all on one page. We should, in the future, try to make sure that these are separate, in the event that they can be addressed separately, but this is the executive session minutes for April 14, 2014.
I would move approval of the executive session minutes, and hope not to release.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. Thank you. Okay. All right. And the summary of actions. If we need to hold anything, let me know. We'll go through these. I'll read through these one at a time.
Mr. Chairman, before you begin, I'd like to make a disclosure on the holder of an all-alcoholic season liquor license.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
I think we should hold eleven.
Okay. So we want to hold eleven? All right. I'll go through these then. Item number one, I instar petition to install one four-inch conduit, and one three-inch conduit, and two handholds on Miami Ave. Verizon petition to place sixty-six feet of two-to-four-inch PVC conduits on Worcester Court. Item number three, Verizon petition, excuse me, to place three-hundred-and-forty feet of two-to-four-inch PVC conduits, or two four-inch PVC conduits, on Jones Road. Application for a one-day liquor license, One Drop Productions Music Festival Cape Cod Fairgrounds, August 2, 2014. Application for a one-day liquor license, Falmouth Artists Guild Summer Gala, July 11, 2014. Application for a one-day liquor license, Fresh Pond Holy Ghost Society Portuguese Festival, June 8, 2014. Application for two one-day liquor licenses, Fresh Pond Holy Ghost Society Portuguese Festival, June 21 and June 22, 2014. Application for nine one-day liquor licenses. We may have an issue with this. I'm going to hold this. Item number nine, request to apply for the Falmouth Road Race Grant, MES, Marine Environmental Services. Item number ten, request to apply for port security grant by the Marine Environmental Services. We're going to hold number eleven. Item number twelve is an application for automatic amusement device license to T-Room at 196 Crystal Springs Ave. And item number thirteen is a request for payment of invoices from the Police Department donation account.
So moved.
All right. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. This is for items one through seven, nine, ten, twelve, and thirteen. Any discussion?
Just to affirm that nine and ten, those two grants have gone through the Finance Committee Subcommittee to take a look at.
Excellent. All right. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. The only reason I held number eight was because they're asking for, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, they are asking for nine one-day liquor licenses, which I believe exceeds...
Up to thirty, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, it's up to thirty. I apologize. I thought, for some reason, eight stuck in my head. All right. Then in that case, a motion to approve.
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. All right. And Ms. Flynn, you held number eleven.
I did. Only I can't find the page. This is to affirm a DOE R grant for the electric vehicle charging stations. When the first round of this grant was advertised and requested, the money ran out before Falmouth had an opportunity to really apply. So now there is additional funding that could be available to us if we get our application in. So when the Board voted this before, for location, I believe what we voted at the time was that we would use a parking space somewhere on the municipal lot, behind Pagnunin Park, you know, Library Lane, somewhere down between Library Lane, Catherine Lee Bates, and Pagnunin Park. We didn't actually decide on a very specific space, but that's what we looked at. And when the Finance Committee was taking a look at this, because it was a grant, they had some concerns about whether or not that should be the location, and I believe they came up with some other locations, which I don't see here.
The Depot Ave lot.
Yeah. Depot Ave was one, someplace in Woods Hole, I think was one. I don't have that in front of me, so. Right here?
Water Street.
Water Street, Luskum, anyway. So I guess the point is, Megan Amsoor, is she here? I thought she was going to be here. Megan Amsoor from the Energy Committee, or Self-Reliance, rather, and the Energy Committee, was going to come and talk about some options here. But I think the question is, are we satisfied with the vote we took, or do we want to consider other places in which to locate this? Or do we simply want to approve the grant, and then decide on a location in a later time, when we have more time to look at it? I think those are our options.
And just so the Board knows, Ms. Amsoor did ask about being here this evening, but I had assured her that this was on the summary of actions, and that if there was a presentation or extended discussion required, that we should have a separate agenda item for it. So if the Board would like, we can do that. We can schedule that, and shelve this for now, maybe bring her back next week, or in a future meeting.
I don't think there's a reason to shelve this right now. I think it's just something to approve, to be able to apply for the grant, to be able to get back in the queue, and we need to do that. We can work out the location at a future time, and I think that comes down to the Town Manager's office, not the Board of Selectmen, to be able to find an appropriate...
I'm okay with that.
So I'm making motion to approve.
Motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion?
Ask you a question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
My understanding is that one of the items requested is that we designate a preferred location, so I would just ask the Board if he would be comfortable with us suggesting that lot that Selectman Flynn mentioned, behind Pagnunin Park, municipal lot there, as the primary location, if the Board would be comfortable. I think that was the one that was most generally, I believe, agreed upon, not universally, but most generally. So I amend my motion. My motion would be that a preferred location would be behind Pagnunin Park.
The municipal lot. Second.
All right. Motion and a second, then.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. All right. All right. The next item on our agenda, we have a wetland hearing. Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Section 240-77, the Wetland Regulations of the Zoning Bylaws of the Town of Falmouth, on April 28, 2014, at 7:00 PM, in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, in the application of David R. and Martha A. Castles. For permission to redesign, one moment, folks, for permission to redesign, reconstruct, reconstruction, and maintenance of a previously existing common timber pier, ramp, and float in Seapit River at the east end of Ferry Road in Wacoit, Mass. The affected area is Seapit River, and interested parties may review the file in the Selectmen's office. And it is my understanding, we have a note here, that the applicant is requesting for a continuance.
You're taking them out of order, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, this is...
The first one is McCormick.
Oh, my apologies.
That's the second one.
Well, since I've already opened that public hearing, I'll ask that we vote a continuance on this, because the applicant is asking for a continuance to...
June 9.
The first meeting after June 4, which would be June 9. I don't know if that is actually the...
It is the Monday.
But is that the Monday that coincides with our schedule, is the question?
It's tentatively designated to be a meeting date, Mr. Chairman.
It is. Okay. Excellent.
Having checked, this is the letter from the applicant, mentioning June 9 specifically.
And there is a copy of that in the file. So I would ask for a motion, then, to continue this to June 9, on the request of the applicant.
Second.
So moved.
A motion and a second.
She's second. Did I hear a motion?
Okay. Motion and a second, then. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. All right. The next item on our agenda, we have a wetland hearing. Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Section 240-77, the Wetland Regulations of the Zoning Bylaws of the Town of Falmouth, on April 28, 2014, at 7:00 PM, in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, in the application of David R. and Martha A. Castles. For permission to redesign, one moment, folks, for permission to redesign, reconstruct, reconstruction, and maintenance of a previously existing common timber pier, ramp, and float in Seapit River at the east end of Ferry Road in Wacoit, Mass. The affected area is Seapit River, and interested parties may review the file in the Selectmen's office. And it is my understanding, we have a note here, that the applicant is requesting for a continuance.
You're taking them out of order, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, this is...
The first one is McCormick.
Oh, my apologies.
That's the second one.
Well, since I've already opened that public hearing, I'll ask that we vote a continuance on this, because the applicant is asking for a continuance to...
June 9.
The first meeting after June 4, which would be June 9. I don't know if that is actually the...
It is the Monday.
But is that the Monday that coincides with our schedule, is the question?
It's tentatively designated to be a meeting date, Mr. Chairman.
It is. Okay. Excellent.
Having checked, this is the letter from the applicant, mentioning June 9 specifically.
And there is a copy of that in the file. So I would ask for a motion, then, to continue this to June 9, on the request of the applicant.
Second.
So moved.
A motion and a second.
She's second. Did I hear a motion?
Okay. Motion and a second, then. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposition? Unanimous. All right. I apologize, folks. The packet was a little out of order for my agenda.
Thought it was me.
All right. Now we get to the main event. The Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Section 240-77, the Wetland Regulations of the Zoning Bylaws of the Town of Falmouth, on April 28, 2014, at 7:00 PM, in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, in the application of Robert D. McCormick Jr. for permission to construct a fixed pier that will extend approximately eighty feet beyond Mean High Water into Perch Pond, and located at 93 T-Ticket Path, East Falmouth. The affected area is Perch Pond, and interested parties may review the file in the Selectmen's office. The applicant's representative, I presume?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Board. My name is Michael Borselli, Principal with Falmouth Engineering. I represent the applicant. The applicant is Robert and Mauro McCormick. The McCormick's are here in the audience. They own the property at 93 T-Ticket Path. I'm also joined tonight by John Vaccaro of Vaccaro Environmental Consulting, who's in the audience, and prepared the shellfish survey and associated report that's required by Falmouth Conservation Commission as a submittal requirement. We're here tonight requesting permission to construct a recreational pier in the waters of Perch Pond at the property. Reference in the application, there's a single-family dwelling on the property. The house is located here, the proposed dock is located here, and there are some nearby docks adjacent on other properties also shown on this plan. This dock is a timber pile-supported structure. It's been designed in the typical way that you're familiar with, as far as review of the construction. Timber pylons, which are driven, and then they're spanned by timber stringers and crossbracing to support a four-foot-wide deck. This is a straight dock, as opposed to a T or an L. There's no floats or ramp associated with it, and we have, as is customary already been before the Falmouth Conservation Commission, and received a favorable order of conditions from them, with certain standard conditions and some site-specific special conditions. So the order of conditions issued by the Conservation Commission, in effect demonstrates that this dock has met all of the environmental performance standards found in the Falmouth Wetland Regulations, and within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts DEP Wetlands Regulations. Otherwise, we would not have received a favorable order of conditions. Within the Falmouth zoning bylaw, Article 17, there's a wetland regulation that requires us to file a special permit with this Board, and the purpose is outlined in Section 240-77. And I'm just going to paraphrase. The purpose of the article is to provide for reasonable, reasonable protection and conservation of certain irreplaceable wetlands. So I believe, if we convince you that this proposed dock, when constructed, will continue to reasonably protect and conserve certain irreplaceable wetlands, then you could see to it to grant us the special permit. And I think it does do that. I think by virtue first of the order of conditions being issued by the Conservation Commission, and by virtue of the limitations that we're proposing to put on this dock, I think that it's reasonable protection and conservation of the wetlands. When we went through the Conservation Commission review, it was fairly comprehensive, and they made some suggestions on limiting the use of the dock, and they were concerned that there was a potential for more than one boat to be berthed at this dock. There certainly is a potential for a number of boats to be berthed on this dock, but they required us to design in some measures that would discourage at least, and prevent at best, no more than one boat being tied, and the location of that would be here. The remaining sections on both sides are restricted by railings, and are very specific conditions within the order of conditions that will be recorded on the deed, that there's only one boat allowed to be tied at this dock. The dock was designed to provide adequate water depth. The minimum is three feet at low tide. We have approximately four and a half feet in the location where the boat would tie. As I alluded to earlier, there was a shellfish survey and associated report prepared and submitted, and the report summarizes that there are some shellfish in the near-shore areas only, but the location where the boat will be tied is sufficiently spaced from that area, that no, there's no potential adverse impact to that shellfish area. That being said, the applicant is still proposing some shellfish mitigation... That being said, the applicant is still proposing some shellfish mitigation, which is typical in a—in a standard condition of the Conservation Commission approval, and that mitigation is in the form of a contribution to the shellfish mitigation fund that's managed by the Department of Natural Resources. The Department of Natural Resources, through the Shellfish Constable, typically comments on docks that he has a concern with. There have been no comments, to my knowledge, from the Shellfish Constable on this proposed dock application, so therefore, we believe that he's satisfied and has no concerns. There are no eelgrass beds in proximity. In fact, I know of no eelgrass beds in this water body whatsoever, based on my experience in permitting other docks in this water body. There are no shellfish near the mooring field. The performance standard both at the Falmouth Conservation Commission regulations and the DEP regulations has been satisfied. When we design these type of small recreational docks, we look to guidance through a DEP publication called "A Guide to Permitting Small Pile-Supported Piers and Docks." And this dock has been designed to meet those standards. Certain things like maximizing the pile spacing, for instance, minimizing the pile diameter are typical guidelines in that document to minimize any disruption or impacts to water flow and turbidity and things of that nature. The Falmouth Conservation Commission has specific regulations in their—their regulations at 10.34 regarding shellfish in particular, and all of those performance standards have been complied with. The Falmouth Conservation Commission has performance standards that are specific to recreational docks as well, which this is, and again, this dock complies with all of We have reached out to neighbors who could be potentially concerned. Both Director Butters were contacted, and there's letters in your file from those Director Butters indicating that they have no objection to the dock. We have reached out to Greg Fraser, the Harbor Master for the Town of Falmouth, and he has commented and has no objections to this dock and makes reference to no navigational issues. In fact, I think there's two letters in your file from him, because there was a planned revision during the Conservation Commission review that we had him comment a second time. So all in all, this is a typical dock that I have presented, very similar docks to you in the past. It meets all the same standards, all of the same performance standards that have been a concern previous on these other applications. This dock also conforms to, and I believe that we have met the spirit of the purpose within your bylaw and that this—this special permit application should be reviewed and approved favorably, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chairman?
I have just a few. One, just for my sake, since I didn't watch the ConCon meeting. Typically, they always ask for the T or the L. Could you just tell us why they did not ask this time? I'm just curious as to—
Yeah, well, Ts are preferable—
Right.
—because then the boat ties parallel to shore—
Yep.
—and there's less potential for prop wash and turbidity. But because of the limited space or frontage on the pond, in fact, you have to project lot lines out into the water. That's what these dash lines represent. A T would make it so that it doesn't meet a requirement of the Conservation Commission, about a minimum of 10-foot setback from a property line extended.
Okay.
So we really were limited on how we could align and build this dock, which is why the more stringent restrictions on where the boat could tie were imposed.
You said there are no floats. This is just going to be a permanent pier that's always in—
Right.
—with the bubblers necessary to protect the—
Yes.
And just to reiterate what Mr. Fraser said, that there is no plan to do any dredging in Perch Pond, and if there are concerns about there not being enough water depth, that's the residents' issue, the town will not be promising to do that.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, fully aware of that? In fact, there is some interest by some of the property owners to investigate that at some point in the future, but I have several clients on this water body that have the boats that are typical for this, which are the 20 to 25-foot-type recreational open boats with outboard engines that have the ability to raise the engine, and they've learned to manage the tides, but they understand that there is a—one—one location where they have to be careful about the tide, and there may be some time in the future—I—I don't know—some private proposal to look at that.
Any other questions? Ms. Muffin?
I have a few questions. You live on the east side of Maravista, but then with that brown path going across and coming into—I mean, isn't that Maravista in the middle? Are you on—is T-Ticket Path on one side of Maravista and Perch Pond on the other side?
No. T-Ticket Path, which is over here—
Yes.
—where the frontage of the lot is, is on the east side of Perch Pond. This exhibit only shows a portion of Perch Pond, which is just west of the property. It doesn't show the opposite shore, which is several hundred feet beyond, and then beyond that is where Maravista is, further to the west of this.
So what property is owned by the owners that live on T-Ticket Path?
Just the lot.
That is—just—it—show me that. Show me that—the part?
It's the green color—
Yes.
—and the frontage, and so their—their property is showing here, and they're asking permission to go into Perch Pond.
That's across Maravista?
No.
Okay.
Absolutely not.
Okay.
No, Maravista is several hundred feet away, west of it.
West?
Yes.
Then I—I went down to the wrong place today, because I was trying to connect T-Ticket over to Perch Pond. Okay.
Here's—
T-Ticket. Yeah, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
I—I have a question. Mike, the—the map shows a mooring field right to the—I don't know which direction, right adjacent to the dock. Is that still in use, or is that—
That's a—that's a—that's a term that is misleading to you, and mooring field means the place where the boat will tie. It's a term that was coined by the Falmouth Conservation Commission, not to be concerned—not to be confused with what you might think of a traditional mooring field where there are moorings that where boats tie. I know it's confusing, but they use the term throughout their regulations, and we're required to define that spot, and in this case, it's right here, and it's eight-foot by like 24-foot rectangle. It's the designated parking spot, if you will, for the dock's location.
Okay. Greg, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have a couple. Mike, the area where the shellfish is—it was found in the survey, can you give me the—the height over that shellfish from the—from the—
The fixed pier itself—
Yes.
—is actually a profile on your plans, and there's a requirement that we elevate the walkway a minimum of five feet above that. In fact, it's higher than that, because DEP Chapter 91, folks, require five-foot clearance from the bottom of the stringers versus the decking for public access, and that's been provided for here.
So there is—the—the would still be public access in that shellfish area?
There would be public access, and there would be—there's actually special sunlight penetration decking that allows for adequate sunlight through. So between the height and the decking material, the shellfish area is protected.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? This is a public hearing, so the board invites public comments. Anyone who is speaking—or anyone who'd like to speak in favor of the project? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Any general comments or questions? Hearing none?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Do we want to put any of the public—
Second.
Oh, the official documents and record. Sorry. Just that we have heard from Greg Fraser, the Director of Harbor Master. He has no issues with mooring, or the only navigational issue has to do with the no plans to dredge by the town. We do have two letters from neighbors saying they have no concerns with the proposal, and we also do have a letter from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and saying that this project does fall within their requirements.
All right. So we have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? It's unanimous. How do we want to proceed?
I would move to approve the plan dated—
It is dated August 23rd, 2013, with revisions on August 25th, 2013, and February 4th, 2014.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion?
I'd just like to say that typically, what happens in an area where we have some channel problems, and I can use an illustration that some members of the board might know, Ran's Canal in North Falmouth. Collectively, when we have those type of problems, it adds to the health of those water bodies, because the neighbors collectively then get together and do some form of dredging, which provides better flushing in those—those areas. So sometimes, it can be a benefit to have someone who has a recreational boat who wants to be able to use that water body. In this case, I think that's one of the benefits, that they collectively then can get together to be able to add to the health of that water body.
And—and I think it's pertinent to mention that the inlet at Perch Pond is very narrow, and there are issues related to entering and exiting the inlet. So whether it can be dredged at some future time, that—I guess, as the—the notes say, it would be up to the neighbors, unless something extraordinary happens.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion?
Just to add that we do have the recommendation with the conditions, both standard and special conditions, from the Conservation Commission approving the plan.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If anyone just joining us, we have continued the wetland hearing for—
Oh, thank you.
—the Castles at Zero Ferry Road until June 9th. The next item on our agenda is an update for the Falmouth Dog Park. For those of you who are not familiar with it, the Dog Park, there's a memorandum of understanding between—is it the Friends of Falmouth Dogs?
It's the Falmouth Dog Park Incorporated.
Falmouth Dog Park Incorporated and the Town of Falmouth, which owns the property, but is the Dog Park Incorporated which manages it. Dr. Schneider.
And thank you so much for having us. We're here celebrating May 1st, next week, three years of being open and having really thousands of dogs come in and out of that park. I know a number of you drive by it on a regular basis and know that we're busy. I thought that tonight would be a great opportunity to talk a little bit about what we've been up to and what's ahead. We are just coming off of surprisingly our busiest season, the harsh winter, and we found that the park was a go-to place for dog owners who had no place to walk their dogs safely in this very difficult winter. We were—we saw footprints going in and out of the park within hours of every major storm, and we did—we were really grateful that the Plows were able to keep the driveway and parking area open enough that it could be used during this time. It certainly was important to our residents. By the way, we did account, and we found that we are going through an average of 15,000 to 20,000 poop bags each year, not including all the donated newspaper bags that are used. This week, we are fortunate to have Bill Witter working to add more walkway and a bench pad in the shade area of the small dog park. Dr. Barnett's family has donated a new bench in his honor, and another bench that was donated will be installed in another shade area of—the of the all-dog park as well. So this gives us ample shade seating, which has become very important to both the dogs and the dog owners. We also plan to improve the walk going into the park, so it is easy to shovel—we noticed that would be a good idea—and doesn't flood. Dave Domestico, who is a tile installer extraordinaire, will also be adding a number of tiles to our special memory wall. These tiles are made by Woods Hole artist Tessa Morgan, and they range in—from being in memory of a person or an animal to commemorating a special event like this one, which was a wedding. And we keep adding to this wonderful wall that we have just outside as you walk into the park, so I thought that that would be fun to show you these. And we have another 14 tiles being added in the next week to the wall. This weekend, we have two mornings of park cleanup. Saturday will be all volunteers, and Sunday will be volunteers from the Falmouth Jewish Congregation, who are offering to come and work for the third consecutive year. The bubblers are back on, thanks to local plumber Dave Costa, who keeps our lines safe from any freezing. He is a hero every spring, literally a hero, when he turns the water back on and people are just cheering that they don't have to haul gallon jugs of water into the park. We are gearing up for a season of visitors by making sure that our rack cards are in place at the chamber and in town hall and in pet stores, as well as all the local pet-friendly establishments, such as the Seacrest Resort, which was kind enough to sponsor our rack cards, so that we didn't have to pay for them out of what we earn—what we raised. We also have a partnership with TD Bank, who is offering something called the Affinity Program, which gives a donation to the park for every checking and savings account that they have that requests being linked to the dog park. And this Friday, we'll be at the bank actually giving people information on the dog park. We also have added, thanks to one of our board members, Bruce Genler, who's here tonight, that we are now part of the amazon.com charitable situation called smile.amazon.com. And now, you just simply go to smile.amazon instead of just Amazon, and every time you buy something, we get part of the proceeds from that sale. So we're making—we're finding good ways to have some income coming in in these ways. We are also extremely excited that we will be part of the Chamber of Commerce after-hours this month at the Holiday Inn, and this weekend, and at the Chamber event, we hope to encourage lots of supporters to buy tickets to our Sunset Paws Cruise, June 14th, on the Island Queen. Stage Door Canteen has agreed to provide the music for our event, and we'll have great food, and we're looking forward to really a fun time on that cruise. We are also excited, because TD Bank and Beard Subaru of Hyannis are actually sponsoring the cruise. That day, on Saturday, June 14th, our wonderful neighbor, Brick Hill Farm, has again agreed to give us a percentage of all proceeds of sales from that day. And I want to say that we think it says a lot that when other towns are finding that neighbors are complaining that there might be a dog park in their neighborhood, our neighbor is actually donating money like this to our park. So thank you to her—to the owners. We will, of course, be holding our annual pool party the first weekend of August. This has become a favorite event at the park, especially the part where we fill the little baby pools with water and the dogs play with the hoses. We have two other really great announcements. The first is that Falmouth Dog Park has been included in National Geographic's new book, "The Dog Lover's Guide to Travel," by Kelly Carter. I believe she refers to the park as quite impressive and mentions that the park even includes artwork, and we will be having copies of this book for sale at our events and on our website as well. And our—thanks to our newest board member, Bruce Genler, we now— And our, thanks to our newest board member, Bruce Jendler, we now have a very professional public service announcement ready to run on FCTV, and it has been running, actually. We hope to make a short, number of, number of short PSAs to help residents and visitors know some important tips about how to introduce a dog to the park, or how to avoid an altercation. We would like to show you that PSA if you can spare 30 seconds. Bruce?
Lights?
Rebecca, could you get the lights?
Mm-hmm.
The Falmouth Dog Park, located at 257 Brick Kiln Road in Falmouth, provides a safe and conveniently located spot for dogs to play outdoors and to socialize with one another. Their human companions seem to enjoy the park, too. The park is over 1.6 acres large and is open every day from dawn to dusk. There are two fenced-in, off-leash play areas, one for all dogs and one for small dogs. Each play area has benches, water bottles, poop bags, and waste disposal cans. Both fenced-in areas include areas with a cement surface that accommodates wheelchairs and walkers. The parking area, which can accommodate over 20 vehicles, provides easy access to the park entrance. The park is handicapped, as it both has three specially designated park spots. When beaches are closed to dogs, when roads are icy, when hunting season is on, head page hunting with a deer, the Falmouth Dog Park provides a safe and conveniently located spot for dogs to run free and play outdoors. Find out more about us at falmouthdogpark.com.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. I have a few board members here tonight, and I'd like to just introduce them. This is Frank Fernino. You've already met Bruce Jendler. I have Ursula Garfield, and I also have Carol Dopkowski. And they are some of the 13 board members that we have, that span everything from a detective in the police force, who's our police liaison, a member of animal control, who is our liaison in that direction. We have people in charge of eBlasts, the website, Facebook, people that watch out for us with returning thank you notes to those that have given donations. Vet, a vet, local vet, Dr. Alfonso, who gives us help when we have possibly the need for people to know about vaccinations. And it's just been a really excellent three years. So thank you to all of you. And I also want to thank the stewards. We have about 20 stewards who give one or two days a month, so that that park is cleaned, garbage bags changed, and people check the park for cigarette butts or anything that could be a problem. One of the things we hear frequently is, this is one of the cleanest parks we've ever been in. And that's because we have great, great volunteers. So thank you so much, and I hope you'll consider joining us for one of our events. Thank you.
Any questions?
Well, I would just say congratulations for accomplishing that much in three years. But I didn't hear anything if there was an emergency of some type, what your system is to...
Okay. That's a good question. We actually had a wonderful meeting, where we put the police and Department of Natural Resources and Animal Control and us together. And we discussed exactly that, what would be expected. We have posted at the park that the agreement now is that if there's a serious emergency, 911 is absolutely the go-to answer. We also have posted what would be a helpful phone number for 24-hour vet care if somebody had an animal that was injured after hours. And in addition to that, we have an agreement that just as if something were to happen walking the dog along the sidewalk in Falmouth Heights or in Beebe Woods, this is a person-to-person situation. When I get a call that someone says a dog has misbehaved or whatever, I always ask for them to make sure they notice a license plate, a description. We always let the animal control know that. And if it's someone that we find is, actually had a dog injure another dog, and they've just left the premises, people are getting much better trained at taking note of something that gives an identifier. We don't have too many incidents, to be very honest. People who bring dogs that don't behave either get asked to take their dog by others to get them out of there, or they just feel uncomfortable and they leave. We also found that that fence that goes between the two play areas lets somebody take a dog into the one dog area alone and sort of get used to other dogs through the fence. And we encourage that as well. And when we do a PSA where we try to help people on how to introduce your dog to the park, one of the things we'll say is always take them into the small dog area first, especially if it's empty, and let them have a feel of the whole thing.
Good. Well covered.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, thanks. Okay, I'll do one more. Do you have someone that actually mans the park, I mean, that is there from your organization?
We are there, someone's there every day, but not all day. Someone's there checking the grounds, just being present. We try to always encourage board members and stewards to let people know you're a person that someone can come up to and ask a question or say something that's a concern. And that's worked really well. And my phone number is always posted in the kiosk, and I do get calls. It's not unusual for me to hear an anecdote of something that happened. So I just have to always encourage people to, how would you handle this if it happened out on your street, or, you know? That's the agreement. Anybody else?
Well, no, but I just want to say how fortunate we are as a community to have you and your board and all the volunteers do this for all of us and for our animals as well. I mean, this is really a major benefit to this community.
It's interesting, we've gone, Carol and I have gone to speak a number, to a number of towns, as far away, I might add, as into upper state New York and Connecticut, we consult with people. And they are just desperate. I mean, you see what's in the news all the time about the towns down the Cape that are struggling with this. And there's, and even Mashpee, they've been talking about this for so long. Sometimes they shoot for the moon, and it's a little too high. Sometimes they, they just get frustrated. And it took us a lot of years to get to where we had the piece of property and we could move forward. It's hard to convince people to just go for getting it open, and people will see that it works. We were glad we did it the way we did, and we've been able to add some wonderful capital improvements each year.
Great. I think a key part of that, too, is the fact that it was a memorandum of understanding, and it was a private organization that you folks managed to step up to the plate, and you just needed the land from the town.
Yeah.
And that, I think, made it a lot easier, because the town was not asked to put forth any resources, which I think made it a lot more palatable for the taxpayers, and you folks have obviously proven its worth. So, thank you.
Well, and I think it's interesting, I'm hearing rumors that Sandwich is actually, the government is actually going to step up and put in two dog parks in Sandwich, which will be very interesting. That'll be the first time on the Cape that a town actually builds them. But we'll see if that happens. It'll be great. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Well, congratulations to you. Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda, we have the annual request for voluntary water conservation measures from our water superintendent.
She's not here.
She's not here. Is she making the presentation, or?
That was my expectation, Mr. Chairman. But I see, yeah, Mary Beth is not in attendance. There is a memorandum from Mary Beth in the board's packet, Mr. Chairman, that the board would be willing to so consider. This is a proposal that has been brought to the board annually for your consideration. Again, they are voluntary measures, should the need dictate. And the reason for the timing of this, in my speaking with Public Works Director Ray Jack, is that this would allow this voluntary notification to go out with the most recent water bills. So it would be in time for the coming summer season, when water use tends to spike. So this is consistent with what you agreed to in the past.
I just wanted to respond to, I think in the email you sent to us, that Mr. Jack said the town does follow the same guidelines themselves that we're asking.
That's correct. It applies to town properties as well.
Great. For the public certification, the voluntary water conservation measures include the watering of lawns and shrubs limited to odd even days only based on your house address. So if your house number is 97, then you would water only on an odd day, and between the hours of 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM, so the water does not simply evaporate as it's being used. Washing of patios, sidewalks, and driveways is prohibited, excluding businesses for safety and health reasons. Pistol grip nozzles are required for all hoses used for washing cars and all hoses at dockside facilities, so that the water just does not continuously run. And restaurants may serve water when requested. And those are the voluntary restrictions that we have adopted on an annual basis. How would the board like to proceed?
I move approval.
I just had a question about that. Is there something in that ruling about washing your cars in the driveway?
Only that pistol grip nozzles are required for hoses used for washing cars.
And not the number of cars or boats or anything else? I mean, it's just...
And these are just voluntary, too, it's worth pointing that out. There's no enforcement behind this, we're simply asking folks to adhere to these guidelines.
Thank you.
So I will move approval of the water conservation guidelines for this year.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any questions or comments from the public? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, I believe this is, is this going to be continued?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as the board had requested, we have had meetings with the representatives from Greener Image Landscaping, and they are pursuing a business sign on their own private property.
Okay.
As a result of that. And so the board could table this, if that would be your pleasure.
Okay. So this is a request for signed variance by Greener Image Landscaping at 955 Sandwich Road. And so I guess there's no action that we need to take at this time?
No.
All right. And the next item on our agenda. We are moving right along tonight. Next item on our agenda is an application for a change of manager, wine and malt package store license, Ocean State Job Lot, 50 T-Ticket Highway in East Falmouth. The applicant, or the applicant's representative?
Good evening, I'm Mary O'Neill, and I'm representing the applicant, OSJL Spirits LLC. In late 2013, this board granted OSJL Spirits LLC a beer and wine license for the Ocean State Job Lot Store at 50 T-Ticket Highway. The manager of the store, as approved, was a gentleman by the name of Bradley Smith. The Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission approved the license and it issued from the town in early 2014. Mr. Smith is still employed by OSJL. He requested a transfer to another facility in Middleborough. And OSJL had selected Mr. Richard Hayes, who is with me this evening, as the manager for the Falmouth store. So we applied for the change of manager and filled out and submitted all the appropriate application materials, including a query for Mr. Hayes and a personal information form for Mr. Hayes. And if I can tell you a little bit about him, he's been employed with Ocean State Job Lot since 1986, so that's about 29 years. He, prior to Falmouth, managed the Dennis Port location, Ocean State Job Lot location there, and prior to that, he managed the Hyannis location. He, as well as all the employees in the Ocean State Job Lot store selling beer and wine, have been tips trained. I can confirm to the board what had been represented when we applied for the license, which is all of the employees in the store have been tips trained. No employees under the 18, under the age of 18 years are employed in the store, and the store started selling beer and wine approximately two to three weeks ago.
Questions from the board?
Hit all the questions I had.
Okay. We do have a note from the Falmouth Police Department indicating that they've conducted a query check, and they have no issues of concern and no problem with the change of manager.
I don't believe this is a public hearing, so I don't think it's necessary, or is this considered?
It's not a public hearing, but if there's any questions or comments from the public, we do invite them. How would the board like to proceed?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is an application for a change of manager of all alcoholic in holders license, Danny Kaye's Culinary Productions, doing business as Landucci Italia, 824 Main Street.
Mr. Chairman, before we begin, this is an on-premise license. I'd like to disclose that I'm the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. The applicant...
Good evening, how are you today?
Or the applicant's representative, I presume?
I am. John J. Bartolome Jr., the owner of that license and the manager on record. I'm actually in the process of relocating my restaurant to Katoit, where I will be the owner and manager there. So I'm in the process of transferring this license over to Ms. Rose Mace, who will be on the premises, who is also tips certified, and will be running the restaurant. So I decided to close it, which should be sometime around Labor Day.
Questions or comments from the board?
No, but I do want to disclose that Ms. Mace had worked for me for many years at my, my restaurant.
Do not have any...
Yeah. It was in the...
We do, yes.
Okay, great. We do have a recommendation from the Police Department. And the department does not locate, any dispel any information. I guess that's the court.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second. Any questions or comments from the public? All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. Thank you. Congratulations.
Good evening, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving right along. Next item on our agenda is an application for a new common victual license, Prime Cut Deli at 258 T-Ticket Highway. The applicant or the applicant's representative present this evening? They are not. Although, we do not have hours of operation here, so... And it does appear, we have a memorandum here from the Building Commission indicating that they're requesting an increase in seats, and they must submit a parking plan for approval.
Mr. Chairman, this is a common victual license. We have these for donut shops and everything in this community. Typically, those folks don't come to our meetings.
True.
For those. The occupancy and the certificate of inspection are issued by the Building Department, and anything that is necessary would be dealt with by the Building Department itself. So my suggestion would be to approve this, and subject to the necessary permits from the Building Department occupancy and the Board of Health.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any questions or comments from the audience? Any further discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? This is going to need to be signed. All right. Next item on our agenda, we had some interviews at our last meeting for the port representative, excuse me, the representative to the Steamship Authority Port Council. We had three applicants, Robert Young, Robert Munner, and Joseph Drelak. How would the board like to proceed?
Well, I'll make a motion that we put all three names in the nomination.
Second. A motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. So we have the three names in nomination.
And to clarify, this is a term expiring June 3rd, 2015, because it's a two-year term, is that correct?
I believe it's a three-year term, and we have, it's unexpired.
No, it's two years.
Two years, oh, I'm sorry. Do you have that?
Initially, it was a one-year term, when they originally put up with the chapter. And then after that, it was going to be a term of two years.
Ah. I just hid it in my packet.
I believe.
Yeah. Two-year terms, okay. So this is a two-year term. Any discussion amongst the board? Any discussion amongst the board?
I just need to say that this...
I was going to say that.
This is really one of the hardest ones. I can say that we have a diverse applicant pool. I honestly believe that you have to know the town of Falmouth to serve in this position, have a little bit of history. That's a personal opinion. And then we have two specific candidates there that it's very hard for me to make a decision on, either which would serve this town very well. So I needed to say that.
I would reiterate, but in a little bit different tone, that there's such great qualifications that each one of the candidates has that would make them a great, reason why I would choose that particular one.
I'll put my two cents in and I guess I'll agree with you gentlemen that three very good candidates, three very different sets of qualifications. Mr. Young obviously has a very good knowledge of the Steamship Authority. Mr. Munner comes from a background which is not at all unlike what the Steamship Authority does and certainly has an extensive background in the process of bringing parties together where you're at a disadvantage because you have no real authority. It's a matter of working with others. And Mr. Droulet has a very extensive history with the Steamship Authority, both in its operation and its, and being a customer thereof for many years and seeing it grow and challenged the community in its growth. I will say that I'm leaning towards Mr. Droulet because I think his perspective is one that is a very important perspective. As the Steamship Authority continues to grow, and without a doubt it's growing, I mean, we're looking at the new terminal in Woods Hall, we're looking at new vessels coming online. And I think having the perspective of someone who's a very heavy user of the services of the Steamship Authority, both past and present, I think brings a perspective to it that it's a necessary perspective, I think. That's my two cents.
What is the vote required to appoint? Is this a majority?
Majority.
Nice, a majority, okay. But it needs to be three?
It needs to be three, yeah.
If it goes 2-2-1, we have to read the vote?
If it goes 2-2-1, we would, I would suggest that we discard the candidate, I think discard perhaps is too strong a term. We would move forward with the two candidates who have the greater number of votes and try to break the tie there. And unless somebody wants, and I'm...
Well, when we get to that, maybe we can talk about it.
And does someone want to convince me otherwise? Because I've certainly shared my two cents unless you want to just proceed with the voting.
I'm prepared to proceed with the voting.
All right, then. All right, then we'll go down the table then. Ms. Moffin?
Okay. I have my recommendation for Robert Munner.
Okay. Mr. Murphy?
Joseph Droulet.
Mr. Jones?
Robert Munner.
Ms. Flynn?
Robert Munner.
I'm going to stick with Mr. Droulet, which was my first inclination, but Mr. Munner does command the three votes necessary, so congratulations to him. He is our next representative to the Port Council. And thank you to all of the applicants. It's much appreciated, your willingness to step up. Next item on our agenda. We have the Ballymead Capital Assessment Discussion for the boards for the history. And we have both the Town Council here and the head of the DPW. Ballymead was, when it was integrated with the town's water system, there was a vote by town meeting to levy a fee in order to pay for that integration because the Ballymead Water System was actually a private water system which was interconnected with the town's water system. The town has been waiting, I guess you could say, to assess that fee in the hopes of trying to resolve some of the issues with the water pressure concerns up there. But it is long overdue that we assess the fee in order to recoup the money that town meeting did in fact vote to do. So this is on the agenda tonight for discussion and we have Town Council here to guide us and Mr. Jack as well, if need be. So, Mr. Duffy?
Good evening, Chairman. I'm just going to distribute a little graphic worksheet for you folks to consider. I think you all got a copy of the memo I sent last week. Basically, this has been hanging around for a number of years, making the resolution. Perhaps we'll do it in the next week or two. This is a fee which was authorized, actually required by the 2002 town meeting vote when we built the cross-country transmission line from the 1 million gallon elevated tank in Tech Park through Ballymead, the purpose of which was to supply Ballymead with water which relied upon gravity rather than mechanical pumps. And in the opinion of the people who work on water systems, including the Mass Department of Environmental Protection, it's preferable to have gravity be your source of water pressure over mechanical pumps which can break and be not as reliable as you would like. This is part of a plan which was submitted to DEP in the year 2000 and which was specifically approved by DEP. So they did require as part of all of the upgrades to the water distribution system in the year 2000 that this transmission line be built. Town meeting appropriated the sum of $530,000 for this purpose. However, the actual cost of the transmission line when it was finally constructed was somewhere in the magnitude of about $400,000. Ray Jack is working on the exact figure and expects to have a figure for you folks to put into, adopt when you set this fee. As Mr. Putnam did mention, there was, over the course of time, there were some disputes about various issues involving the water system at Ballymead which kind of inhibited us from adopting the fee earlier, one of which was the ownership of the water distribution system, which had been resolved by the vote that this board took a couple of years ago. And also water pressure concerns, which have hopefully been resolved now too. This is a fee which is based upon a specific improvement to the water distribution system that services a particularly discreet area of town, Ballymead. So it's appropriate to assess a fee which will be added on to the water bill and which will be collected as part of the water bill over time to recover the cost of this transmission line. This is not a tax, which is, as you know, from Massachusetts courts have said a tax is when you are raising revenue generally. This is a fee which is designed to recover a specific cost for a specific project which benefits a discreet area of town. So in my little memorandum that I just handed to you, I think there are several areas that you have to be aware of. One is the principal, which is somewhere in the magnitude of about $400,000, and Mr. Jack can speak with more particularity about that. The second one is you have to set an interest rate. This interest rate is what will be applied in the event people exercise an option to apportion this fee over time. Now, as you know, when you have a betterment, for example, if you put a water main down a road, you can have a betterment to the people who have bought the road. We don't have that situation here. That's why we're doing a fee rather than a betterment. But normally, there's an interest rate attached to those people who elect to apportion the payment over time. According to the assessor's office, that is commonly set on water fees and street fees at 5% in this town, so I just noted 5% on that worksheet. I believe there's a 2.5% interest rate on apportioned betterments for sewer, but that's because of grants that you receive from the SRA, which limit the amount of interest there. The next thing you have to do is determine the amount per property and that is a function of how much, how many properties are to be considered in this, in the assessing of this fee. And Mr. Jack will talk to you about the number of lots, the number of undeveloped lots, the potential for development, and the non-residential lots such as the country club. Also, to be considered in the fee and part of your determination will be, how do you handle properties that are currently undeveloped that do not get water bills? As Mr. Jack has pointed out to me, typically the situation is when you, if you come along and subsequently want to build in the area that is subject to this particular fee, you are charged the fee upfront as part of your cost of development. That's one thing you'll have to specify in your vote. Another issue is the question of apportionment. Will you allow, at the option of the homeowner, the right to apportion this fee over a period of time so that they can bear the cost annually with their water bill rather than have a lump sum fee upfront? Finally, I have given you a geographic description of the area, which is the subject of the fee, the Ballymead section of town, and I've identified it by all of the roads, at least all the ones I could find on the town map. And also, the decision has to be made as to when this fee will be collected. And I believe there's a, there's a water bill that will be going out in the fall of 2014 and that would be the first payment. So these are the issues that you have to think about and be prepared to vote on. Mr. Jack will talk about some of the specifics. Mr. Suso or Ms. Harper may have some comments also. We expect that there'd be sufficient data for you to come to a confirmatory vote at your next meeting.
All right. Any questions at this time?
I'm waiting to hear from Mr. Jack.
All right. Mr. Jack?
Thank you. Good evening. It's, actually, that's a hard act to follow. I think you really covered all of the points. We'll be coming back to the board with the specifics of it. You're probably looking at a range of about 300 users that would be assessed the fee. The cost is going to be something under $400,000. That would equate to about $1,200 to $1,300 per assessment. And of course, then the board will be determining what the repayment schedule on that is going to be. Mr. Duffy is correct in that historically, the way we handle undeveloped properties, of which there are really very few in Ballymead, but when that property does come in for a water connection, the fee would normally be assessed at that time. So it would be factored into the overall equation to determine what the cost per unit is going to be, but it just wouldn't be collected immediately. But there are very, very few of those.
Questions?
I have a question. I'm thinking about the undeveloped property. I suppose it's fair to assume that the full amount would be assessed at the time of development, not prorated over a period of time? Is that how it's usually done?
Generally, yes. Yes, generally, it's the full amount.
Okay.
What's the length of time this has been going on?
I'm sorry?
What's the length of time that all of this has been discussed and they're talking about it, Ballymead?
It actually started back in 2002. I want to say were the original discussions and then the line was completed in 2004. So it's been a long time.
I believe it was, and someone correct me if I'm wrong, town meeting voted to assess this in 2004?
2002.
In 2002, okay.
I have a couple of questions to you that I'm pretty sure that it's always been standard at 5%, but that was back when interest rates were extremely high. 5% seems to be a relatively high interest rate at this point in time. I don't know, many people get 5% on any investment, you know, in any form or fashion. So when you come back, I hope that you would take that into account. When we borrow on the town side, we're lucky right now, if we, well, we're not lucky, we're always paying around 2 to 2.25%. I don't think we're looking to make money on the assessment on the interest rate, but I don't think we're looking to lose money either, so I hope you would take that into account.
Correct. On a betterment, that fee is established, so it's not something that we really have an option on. And that's done through the assessor's office under state law with respect to a capital improvement fee. I would defer to Frank on that.
And that's what I'm saying, you're going to come back and make a presentation, so I'm going to collectively say that to both of you at this time. And Mr. Chairman and Selecting Murphy will also consult with the Finance Director and have some information from that direction as well to bring to bear for the board. Mr. Chairman, could I ask, I'm sorry, Selecting, forgive me.
Was there approximate number of units we think it's going to be? Did you mention that? Did I miss that number?
1,200 to 300?
Just, I would say just over 300.
Oh, sweet.
300 units from my notes and approximately $1,200 to $1,300 per unit is what it may end up being.
Yes. Over the course of potentially 25 years, if we factor that.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to clarify for May. I think primarily with Town Council. Will this board need to be conducting a hearing then on this topic? And if so, does a date on that need to be set this evening? Or is that just a matter of advertising or what's the recommendation there?
It's not a hearing like a, like a hearing on a liquor license for your mail notice to a butters. This is an agenda item. You're having open discussion. You should invite public comment tonight or at the next time that we assemble to discuss this issue. And here, everybody, I think the concept of a hearing is not so much a legalistic term as it is an opportunity for everybody to be heard.
Got it. So my understanding then would be if the board was so determined, this could be on the board's agenda, we can, when you meet again, if that's your determination in the form of a meeting, taking public comments at that time. Thank you.
Does it qualify as a fee hearing though, Frank? If it is a fee, we do have policies as to exactly how we're supposed to run those.
And under the bylaw, you have that, Section 119, Chapter 119, that's for recurring annual fees.
Okay. All right. Any further questions then from Mr. Jack or Mr. Duffy? Do we have any questions or comments from the audience?
Mark Finer in Precinct 6, does this constitute any kind of a settlement with the suit from Ballymead which went to mediation through the summary of actions several weeks ago? Or is this just an aside to it?
Let Mr. Duffy address that.
As Mr. Finer has pointed out, we did have a mediation session with Ballymead. It was on the agenda for tonight and you'll make a public announcement once the agreement has been signed by all parties. So that is upcoming. As far as the fee is concerned, it is not subject of mediation. It is not related to the settlement. It is something that this board has a right to take and act upon independently of any settlement.
Any further questions or comments from the audience? All right, so we will schedule this then for a future meeting within the next few weeks, I think, just so we can get this done. Like I said, it's been hanging out there for quite some time. And I think, well, Mr. Duffy, if you wouldn't mind, one last question. Would it be appropriate for us to notify the residents?
You can, yes.
Either perhaps a mailing to them to notify them that we are undertaking...
Whatever you feel is appropriate, go ahead and do it.
Okay. Are there any objections from the board to making sure that we notify the residents, perhaps with a postcard mailing that we will be conducting?
I will also send an email to the attorney of record who perhaps can hit forward and send it to all his people.
That might work as well. Thank you. Board comfortable with that then? Just so we can make sure everybody's notified. All right. Well, with that, there's no action we need to take this evening. We'll get this on the agenda. And we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. Which is a request for sign variance. This is an off-premises signs for the Fresh Pond Holy Ghost Society Breakfast Buffet. The applicant or the applicant's representative here this evening? All right, so there, we have an application, a request.
Four different signs, is that right?
Let's see, various locations. Looking for the actual count here in the application.
Looks like four, looks like four locations.
To, yes, okay.
I make a motion to approve. This is an annual event. I think we've approved this many, many years, many as I remember.
Motion and a second. Any questions or comments from the audience? All right.
These are actually six events. It happened the first Sunday of February.
Right, yeah, you have to remember, from May through November. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. Have that signed. And then next on the agenda, we have 2014 seasonal license renewals.
Before we begin, Mr. Chairman, I'm the holder of an all-alcoholic seasonal liquor license.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Okay. Should we take this category by category?
Yes.
I would move approval of the all-alcoholic restaurant license seasonal for the Pier 37 Boathouse and Falmouth Raw Bar Boathouse.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous.
I'd move approval of the Common Victor license seasonal, Pier 37 Boathouse, Falmouth Raw Bar Boathouse.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous.
I'd move approval of the Entertainment License Seasonal for Pier 37 Boathouse and Falmouth Raw Bar Boathouse.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous.
I just wanted to make a comment. It, it's important to note that there was, we approved this, but there was an action taken by the ABCC in regard to the, the boathouse and...
The Pier 37?
Pier 37 Boathouse. And that action was exclusive of our actions.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd move approval of the Bowling Alley License for Ryan Family Amusements.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous.
I'd move approval of the Lodging Houses License for Bailey's by the Sea, Captain Manor Inn, Captain Tom Lawrence House Inn, El March Inn, Grandview Guest House, Inn on the Sound, Woods Hole Inn, and Woods Hole Passage.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous.
And I'd move approval of the Secondhand Dealer's License for Aniela's Attic Treasures, Cape Cod Pickers at Auction, Cash Point, Dee's Home Again, Emerald House Thrift Shop, Falmouth Stamp and Coin, Fay's Gallery, Finds of All Kinds, Hanush Jewelers, Harmony Hut, and Uncle Bill's Country Store.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Unanimous. All right, thank you all. Those will be in an upcoming package. I think we've set a record tonight, ladies and gentlemen.
Oh, my goodness.
I thought, I thought we'd hit on what?
I think if you fed us each night, we might have known.
All right. Any individual reports from the board? Ms. Moffett?
I thought the gentleman that first addressed us this evening concerning Alma Road sounded exactly as many of our residents in town concerning the wastewater and not understanding. I think in our minds, we know this inside out. We've heard it over and over, but that's us, and that's our job. I, I felt he, he had a legitimate complaint, and, and I believe that in that area, there are many people that feel the same way. And I don't know that it's this board, but I think the gentleman was correct. If there is a language to be used, it can't be on the level of the legal language. And as all of the information that we have many times went over my head, but no. But if people are to vote for that much money, where are we, 100, 100 million, I guess, for the two of them? I, I think the least that could be done from Town Hall or the Board of Selectment is to put it into a language, have the dollar amounts, give the options, and maybe that's an article in the newspaper, or maybe it is something that is sent to any resident in the area that is going to be affected. So I would like to suggest that and see where that goes.
And I did make a note of it because we are going to have, in one of the meetings in the next couple of weeks, we're going to have Mr. Jack come in and make a presentation regarding the water treatment plant so that the public understands what it is that's being voted for and with that particular override. And I think we should probably do something similar for this, and perhaps at the very least, we need to outline some of the issues that were raised. And I think one of the things that hasn't been discussed a whole lot is the, the fact that if someone volunteers to participate in the alternative toilets program, that they're exempt from the betterment, they're exempt from hookup fees, other than, and I'm not sure what the, the fees or the, what monies may be available to participate in the, the alternative toilet program, but it's an option that people have, and I think we do need to make sure that everyone understands what options they have. So perhaps we'll schedule to make sure that the Water Quality Management Committee will also come in and provide us with that information and make sure that we can get as much information out to the people.
And I wholeheartedly agree, but a follow-up with Becky saying is, most of the presentations we've had are the, the idea and the ideal of how we're progressing to clean up our estuaries. I think this needs to be more site-specific to these folks that are going to be affected. What's going to happen in your streets? Are there going to be, what's in your yard? What's your betterment going to be? And tailor it to the individuals there that this vote will actually affect. I know that we've done our, a job to try to work with the Water Quality Management Committee to progress, to move up, move to clean up our estuaries. But this is local. This is something that those folks who are going to be affected, you know, we just need to explain it to them. Explain how they're going to be affected, and, you know, sometimes there's nothing to fear except fear yourself, fear itself, but in this case, we don't know. I mean, he brought up a point of an 88-year-old woman.
Yes.
And there are alternatives. I know Doug brought them up during our discussions. We need to let those folks know that.
If I could just emphasize again, and it needs to be in very simplistic language for many of our residents. It cannot be what we're talking about.
Perhaps we could also have Jennifer Petit in as well to help address any financial implications and try to make sure that this is as understandable as possible for anyone who hasn't been following this process and isn't intimately familiar with the terminology and the details of what's going on.
And I would suggest next meeting, the fifth, is the time to do it, so there's enough time. That's the same time we have scheduled, ready to come in and talk about the filtration plan. But I think really to give people a chance to know and hear, and a few weeks before they are going to vote, as opposed to the night before, because that's our other meeting.
Very true. Yep, and I think actually looking at the draft agenda we have here, if we added that in, that would probably make for a full agenda that evening.
Well, I'm suggesting that something is coming through the mail. I am saying that many people do not have the channels, the local channels, to watch that, and maybe they're not taking the newspaper. I think it has to go straight into the home.
I, the only downside with that is, now that we've approved something at town meeting, this is a valid initiative.
Yes.
And we cannot spend town funds for a valid initiative.
Correct.
So once this is done, we, it's too late to spend town money for that.
I didn't, okay.
Well, it's too late to spend town money to encourage people to vote on it. We can actually spend money to inform the effect of what this vote is and to inform the residents.
Informationally.
Informationally.
It is informationally.
Whether it's us or whether it's the Water Quality Management Team who could come up with an information package, they...
It depends on how we spin it there. That's exactly right. If it's strictly informational, I think...
That's all of it.
Right.
That's all of it. Can we spend it now?
I, I'm going to defer to Town Council because there's been a little back and forth in regard to that, but it's out of...
Who's left us now. But we'll, we'll sit down with Julian and get some feedback from the Water Quality Management Committee and Town Council and the Town Finance Director and see what we can put together. Perhaps something simple that explains the options available to folks, and of course, we'll also try to schedule a presentation from the Water Quality Management Committee and the, and the Town's Finance Director to that extent, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Yeah, I did want to make one comment. On the Wednesday, the 16th of April, I attended an open meeting presentation at the Woods Hole Community Hall from the Steamship Authority with their revised plan of what the, the concept, and we're very cognizant about saying this is a concept and it can continue to evolve, but this is a basic concept that members of the community association, members of the business association, and then was presented to the entire interested parties in, at that evening. And it's a far cry from what was originally presented, and our representative Kathy Norton is taking the lead, which is great, helping move it forward to make sure. There's still some idiosyncrasies out there that need to be worked on, but the Steamship Authority has been very open-minded to their limitations. Their limitations are that they still have to run a safe and viable operation, but they've been very cooperative, and I don't think it pleased everybody, but it was surely a major difference in the last presentation that was made in Woods Hole.
Could you at least describe what they talked about, this no-build option?
No-build?
There was an article in the paper saying that there was, they were still saying an option that they weren't going to build anything, but that's what it just sounded like.
There, there was no option on the table. The basic option was to shrink the size of the, of the terminal, move out the executive offices and, and get rid of all the skywells, elevations and things of that nature. They did present that they have to get above the floodplain.
Right.
But that's going to be with the gradual grade rising. Keep in mind that that area was originally hollowed out for the, for the railroad, and it won't bring it back up to that height, but bring it up to the 13-foot level where the building would be, which would be set back and would minimize, blocking of vistas and views minimize, comes down to perceptions, and would eliminate the, the current building, which would go away. So it's hard to fully conceive what it would look like because right now, you're looking at it, the other building is there. The other building would not be there. So the view they claim would be larger, but it's hard to visualize, visualize that because you're going to take a building down. But it would lead for a lot more access for bike parking, a better, safer end terminus to the bike path. Of course, one of the areas that is eliminated is, there's 18 spaces in Woods Hole for the community that was negotiated with the last lease that go away. So that's why I keep bringing up to this board is that those 18 spaces weren't out of the generosity of the hearts of the Steamship Authority. They were a quid pro quo in the last lease, so as we move forward, we might want to get those spaces and a few more back in the back lot. So they continue, they still have, their Board of Governors still has not voted on it. There's been some talk from the island folks that they'd like the building as close to the water as they possibly can because it's convenience for them, but I, I think cooler minds will prevail and that it will be an asset for the community for many years to come, which ultimately will affect the entire town because they're going to move the administrative offices somewhere else in town. No one knows where yet. They're, they're not sure yet. So that's a separate discussion.
Anyone else? All right. I do have Mr. Suso's report. If you wouldn't mind highlighting, I know a lot of people are probably wondering about some of the, the construction work on downtown if they haven't been paying attention.
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. I'd be happy to do that if I may, just that and maybe a couple of other minor, minor items on the report. But first of all, the one I think to which you're alluding, the, as the board's aware, the planned reconstruction of the Blue Stone Sidewalk on the south side of downtown is now underway, and if you've had the opportunity to observe the results to date, it is my hope you'll be pleased. I've already received a significant number of positive responses. We're just maybe into the first third to one quarter of that reconstruction, again, on the south side of downtown where it has been most needed. Also, that will include the frontage area of Town Hall. For those who use Town Hall regularly, there is a Blue Stone section there as well. And please keep in mind that the, again, this is stamped, colorized concrete, has yet to be sealed, which will darken the color somewhat when the sealing does occur, and it's my hope that all will agree it's quite an enhancement to public safety in a very cost-effective way in our downtown area. And I do want to thank Public Works Director Ray Jack, Town Engineer Peter McConerty, our roadway superintendent John Lyons, and contractor as well, Lawrence Lynch, for the great work that they're in the midst of providing. And by the way, the completion date is prior to the end of the month of May, so that in our busiest season, this enhancement will be behind us. Also, work is moving forward with the landscaping of Peg Noonan Park. We've talked about that a bit in the recent past with the board. The performing stage reconstruction in the park will be slightly delayed due to temporary delay in the availability of the Sheriff's Department work crew. However, the stage has already been poured from the standpoint of the foundation for that reconstruction, and we look forward to this important enhancement being done before the coming busy season, season in June. So again, we anticipate that to be completed during the coming month of May. Also, I should note, yes, I'm sorry.
On that one issue, because I know you talked to Brent and me about this one. There was a question about the water system that's going to be put in. Could you just clarify that?
Correct. Yeah, correct. The, there's still exploration going on regarding a, what's deemed a mist irrigation system. It's a specialized type of irrigation that is more water-conserving than the normal irrigation, and the review is underway by Rocky Gomes, our park superintendent, working with Ray Jack as to whether that can be installed at this time to cost-effectively provide irrigation. But it is, what I understand, to be deemed a mist system. I'm not an expert on, on that type of irrigation, but there is a normal sprinkler type which you, you know, may see in golf courses and residential lawns. That is not the type we're talking about. This is one that is inherently more water-conserving, and to the extent that we would be able to go forward, it would be that type of a system. It does not, it would not require any kind of a private well that would utilize the town's existing water system, if we are able to go forward with that. And that is being looked at as part of this re-landscaping, but no final conclusion yet, so I'll be keeping the board apprised about that. Also, I do want to note one other item that came up today. It is something we've reported a while ago to the board, but I just, because there's a continuing concern. It's a condition of Davisville Road. The boards will recall, we have Chapter 90 funds being brought to bear on the reconstruction of that roadway. The, in the month of May, we'll begin the drainage improvements that are necessary in order to properly reconstruct that roadway. Immediately following those drainage improvements in the summer months will be the reconstruction of the roadway itself. I do not have an exact timetable for that because when the drainage reconstruction begins, sometimes more work is needed than anticipated. Once you begin to excavate, there may be more damage, more work need to be done, but we anticipate the resurfacing will, will begin after that drainage reconstruction. It'll, it will be done properly, of course, and we do want to extend our apologies to residents regularly using that road at the condition of it, especially after the most difficult winter we've just completed. And we would just ask for their continued patience and caution as they drive that over the next couple of months while the reconstruction work is underway. So the good news is that will be happening, the bad... The bad news is, it's not done yet. And of course, as we're all aware, we're just experiencing the break in the weather that's allowing us to begin to undertake important roadway reconstruction and the sidewalk work I just referred to as well. So because of the fact that we try and limit our construction impact, our season's fairly narrow, in the case of Davisville, it will extend it in the summertime, when school buses have ceased to use that roadway, and it's a little less busy from the standpoint of school being in session. So that, that project is unfolding as well. If I could just mention a couple other items briefly, Mr. Chairman. I did do want to note that the Police Department has convened the Citizens Police Academy, which I understand has been, had been interrupted and not held for several years due to budget limitations of the recent economic recession. I was pleased to be in attendance at the first evening session this past Wednesday, and I do hope to attend as many sessions as possible, and as my meeting calendar allows. There are eight to ten, there are ten sessions in total, and again, I'm hoping to be in attendance at the lion's share of those scheduled permitting. And also, Mr. Chairman, I do want to thank all members of the board for your very gratifying vote of confidence on a successor employment agreement for me as town manager. I do look forward to continuing to serve you with great anticipation, and I thank you all for that, and I wish you a good evening.
Thank you. Any last questions or comments? Ready to wrap up?
Your turn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Founder Abraham Penn taught a valuable lesson that has been part of a tradition since 1919, when he said, "I'd rather make a friend than make a sale." For more than ninety years, Puritan has been making friends as a unique family-owned company right here in Cape Cod. At Puritan Cape Cod on 199 Main Street, as well as Chatham, Mashpee, and Hyannis, you'll find the latest in men's and women's clothing, as well as ski and tennis equipment, and much more. Puritan Cape Cod, (548) 0116, or puritancapecod.com.
Internet services provided by Cape.com Incorporated. Established in 1994, Cape.com is the only locally owned and operated internet service provider on Cape Cod. Our specialties include e-commerce applications and design, wide-area networking services, and high-speed DSL internet access throughout eastern Massachusetts. Cape.com continues to lead the way with cutting-edge applications, superior networking services, and quality customer support. For more information, visit us at www.cape.com, or call us at (539) 9500.